Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the December 16th, 2024 Regular Board of Education Meeting. President Ratliff could not be here tonight, so I will be running the meeting. Just calling us to order. Let's see, we do have a, for Agenda Item 1B, just a new Agenda Item.
So we have two memorials to do for tonight. One is for Nora Lynn Van Riper, although I always knew her as Lynn Van Riper. She passed away, she was 89 years old. She passed away on November 23rd. She was actually a 1953 graduate of Harding High School. After high school, she attended Miami University and Oxford for two years and received, at that time, what was called a cadet degree, which allowed her to teach for four years. So I actually learned something because I didn't know they could, they did that. So she did that for four years. She taught elementary school in Middletown, Ohio. She later moved to Marion where she taught elementary school. She taught in Marion, she also went back in December of 1974, got her real teaching degree, and then also received a master's degree. And she taught for 37 years for Marion City Schools as an elementary teacher and then later as an art teacher. She was an accomplished artist that inspired many students at Grant, Taft, Edison Middle Schools, as well as Glenwood and Pearl Street Elementary Schools. She displayed her students' creations in the Heart of Ohio Art Exhibit each year, and also had many students displaying art in the Governor's Tower in Columbus, Ohio. She is survived by her son, William Robert Van Riper, and her daughter, Teri Van Riper. The second memorial is for Donna Lee Foreman. She was 92 years old.
I believe so, yes.
Donna graduated from Marion Technical College as an RN. She would end up going to St. Joseph College to earn her bachelor's degree. After graduating, she worked for the Marion City Schools as a registered nurse for 20-plus years before retiring. She was a caring person and loved to take care of children. In her free time, she enjoyed being creative and crafty. She had a green thumb when it came to plants. She had four children, two of which preceded her in death, and she is, leaves behind to remember her legacy, a son, David Hypes, and a daughter, Becky Scott. So we just want to remember those people.
Gotcha. And thank you very much for that. So if you would please, as we finish the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'll just join us in 37 seconds of silence for former Marion City School employees who have passed, as well as for their families to, if you could also stand and recite the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Ratliff, Mr. Weidling?
Here.
Mrs. Dyer?
Here.
Ms. Swanger?
President.
Mr. Guyer?
Here.
Okay, item number three on tonight's agenda. Letter A, additions and deletions to the agenda. One thing that I wanted to remove tonight towards the end due to a lack of need for it. We will need to, Section 17, we will need to later decide a date for the organizational meeting for 2025. But for Item 17B, President Pro Tem, we won't need to do that because all of the same officers or same board members are here.
You're still supposed to...
Still supposed to do it, even though we're...
Yeah, you're still supposed to set that. Yeah. It'll just, it's just to start the organizational meeting.
Gotcha. Then we'll get to that when we get there.
Yeah.
Okay.
It just has to happen, like, what, 15 days? What's the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
15 days after the beginning of the year?
Okay.
Because technically, the presidency ends on December 31st.
Therefore, President, gotcha. Okay. We'll still need to do that then. My mistake. Okay, moving, are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay, seen that there are none. Item 3B, approval of the agenda. We need a motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second. Want to call the roll, please?
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Agenda passes. Next, number four on the agenda, superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you, Vice President Weidling and the board members. Good evening. Everybody, good evening. So the first thing on the superintendent's report, I'd like to recognize an employee. So we'd like to honor Ms. Lisa Miller for being exemplary service to Marion City Schools. Lisa, will you come up, please? Lisa was an entertainer before everybody got here, so I don't think she should be, she should be embarrassed by this.
(laughing) We are the champions!
She's not shy, folks.
I wonder why she's being recognized?
Yes. Mr. Weidling, if the board at this point, if you could read the proclamation, maybe the board take action, and I'd love for Lisa to walk around and shake his hand, and maybe we could get a picture.
Get a picture in the back.
Yeah, that'd be great.
My honor, my pleasure, and I'd be lying if I said I didn't know this was coming. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
So, yeah, gotcha.
Honoring Lisa Miller for exemplary service to Marion City Schools. Whereas Lisa Miller serves as a dedicated bus driver for Marion City Schools, providing safe and reliable transportation for our students. And whereas Lisa consistently goes above and beyond in her commitment to support the students and the mission of Marion City Schools, demonstrating an unwavering willingness to assist in any way possible. And whereas Lisa has stepped up time and again to ensure no student misses an opportunity due to a lack of transportation, including recently volunteering to transport the girls' wrestling team on a Sunday, exemplifying her selfless dedication. And whereas Lisa regularly takes trips that others decline, often choosing less desirable assignments to ensure every trip is covered, putting the needs of students and the district first. And whereas Lisa's extraordinary efforts and positive attitude contribute significantly to the success of Marion City Schools, making her an invaluable member of our team, now therefore be it resolved that the Marion City Schools Board of Education and the superintendent, on behalf of the entire district, do hereby recognize and extend our heartfelt gratitude to Lisa Miller for her exceptional service, unwavering dedication, and outstanding contributions to the Marion City Schools community. Furthermore, we proclaim December 16th, 2024, as Lisa Miller Appreciation Day in honor of her exemplary efforts and steadfast commitment to our schools and our students.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, just real quick. I've had the pleasure of knowing Lisa for a couple of years now. When I was a coach here in our district, our kids were excited when Lisa was the bus driver. And I think that was because they knew she was gonna, she was gonna interact with them. She was gonna go into the gym, or go to the tennis match, and she was gonna cheer for them. And then when the kids got back to the bus, if they didn't have a team meal waiting for them, she had some sort of snack or water or beverage that the kids could have before they went home. And here recently, my kids attended Hayes Elementary in the pre-K program, and each year, at the end of the school year, I'd go and pick them up, and Lisa would be in the cafeteria holding a pizza party for all the kids that ride her bus. I think those things are reasons why Lisa's here tonight. And I think those are things that we certainly need to celebrate, and we appreciate everything you do for them.
I love my job. I really do. I love my job. I look forward to Fridays, but I always look forward to Friday. I really do. When those kids get on the bus and they look at my nails, like, hey, look at that, look at my hair, that, I look like that. Thank you.
We thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and, well, hold on, we're not done yet. And I'll admit, my mother-in-law, Donna Evans, has been on the bus with Lisa for how long now?
She used to be on my bus.
Yes, but for, you've known her for how, so four years?
Four years.
Okay, and I...
Yeah, we were together for four years.
Four years.
We've been together for 10.
Yes, and I've heard some phone calls, and that's when I have to, you know, sometimes take off my school board hat. It's not an easy thing that you do. So, and, and everybody knows that, but you keep plugging away. And again, to go above and beyond in a profession that is not simple, again, speaks volumes of who you are and more of what we want in this district as we move forward. So again, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We all go get a picture back there.
Take a vote?
Well, I have something to say as well about her. And I've known her and her former husband, May, rest in peace. And we've had great conversations, and he used to keep you company, and he would come to all of the girls' basketball games, and just a warm and, and loving family. So I appreciate you and him being in the Marion City Schools family as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and do we have a motion to approve this proclamation?
No, no.
Now you're gonna choose mine?
So moved.
I'll second that. Can you call the roll, please?
Excuse me, Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll go get a picture.
We're gonna get a picture in the back. Next, Vice President Weidling, I'd like to invite Lydia Price up. I don't know if Lydia's gonna be as quite as entertaining. So Vice President Weidling, I'd like to make a recommendation honoring Lydia Price for her outstanding achievement in cross-country.
And we know that you were delayed being here last time, so whoops. So thank you very much for being here tonight. It was a pleasure to watch you run the past couple of cross-country seasons in person as well. We know that you have one more year left, so congratulations, but let's do the honors here. Whereas the Marion City School District Board of Education proudly recognizes and celebrates the dedication, skill, and accomplishments of our student athletes who exemplify excellence in both athletics and academics. And whereas Lydia Price, a standout student athlete at Harding High School, has earned remarkable achievements in cross-country, including being named the MOAC Runner of the Year, qualifying as a Division I Regional and State Qualifier, earning First Team All-Ohio honors, and receiving Academic All-Ohio recognition. And whereas these accomplishments are a testament to Lydia's exceptional athletic abilities, relentless work ethic, and her commitment to academic excellence, making her a role model for her teammates, peers, and the entire Marion community. And whereas Lydia's achievements in cross-country reflect her dedication to both her sport and her studies, and she has proudly represented Marion City Schools at the highest levels of competition, bringing honor and pride to her school and her district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Marion City School District Board of Education does hereby extend its heartfelt congratulations to Lydia Price for her outstanding accomplishments in cross-country. We commend her for her athletic skill, academic dedication, and the positive impact she has made within our district and community. Be it further resolved that a copy of this proclamation will be presented to Lydia Price as a token of our pride in her achievements, with our best wishes for her continued success in both her athletic and academic pursuits. Presented this 18th day of November, well, this is from November 2024, but this is December, you got it. So again, congratulations.
Do you guys mind if I say something?
Yes.
To put some things in context, from a statistics standpoint, the last time we had a runner in cross-country, I had to go to the state cross-country meeting, was 2005. And she's the first person to go back since then and become All-Ohio. The record was, previous record was from 2005, 2003. She ran in 1909, perspective, and then she ran 1825 at the state meeting. So she crushed the school record by 44 seconds.
Wow.
And, you know, to watch her assist her both, if you want to be inspired, come watch the workout. Come watch the workout. It doesn't happen easily. It is hard work, and, and it is inspiring to watch. So I appreciate everything, everything you've done. Thank you.
And I'll just piggyback off of that for a second, you know. I've known the girls for a number of years now, and it's neat, and I thank you as a parent, because you'll probably run by our house 365 times a year. And 360, you'll probably see our son in the window just watching the two of you. And so when we came over on the day that we sent you off, and the kids were so excited to make those signs, he got in the car and he said, "That's why she runs every day." I said, "Yeah, that's why she and her sister run every day." So you may not know it, I know you know who they are, but it's not just them, it's a lot of other kids in this community. And you guys are inspired a lot of them. So thank you so much.
Okay, same thing, we'll go to the back and get a picture.
Motion.
Motion. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
Motion.
Second. Second. Can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Vice President Weidling, just a couple more things under superintendent's report I'd like to make mention tonight. First, I'd like to congratulate the Hayes Elementary staff. They were awarded the Ohio PPIAS Recognition Bronze School, which is all about Tier One implementation with fidelity. So congratulations to them. They were the school, only school in the district to receive that. We're hopeful, moving forward, that we will have multiple schools next year as we continue to work on MTSS implementation moving forward. Next, I'd like to report out, our third graders did a really nice job on the fall state assessments. The proficiency rate increased from last year to this year by 4%, and that's while the state average dropped 5%. So that is a very good sign that we gained 9%. It was a 9% swing across the state early on this year. So big accomplishments, good sign early on that we're making some movements, some progress. Next, Future Freshman Night was this week. Tremendous success. I believe Mr. Haner in his report out has some nice pictures to show. I'd like to thank the staff for their engagement, their commitment to the event. They put a lot of time into preparing for it. There was a lot of excitement, a lot of energy that night. We had a tremendous showing. I think we had worth 400 people that were served, that ate dinner that evening, and, you know, there are a lot of people that didn't eat. So I, we had to be north of 500 or 600 people that night, so very successful night. And then, we of course are planning a very similar event coming up for those kids transitioning from the elementary schools. That will be attending grants, so we look forward to that event as well.
Do we have a ballpark for that, or is it too early to...
February 20th.
Oh, that's...
February 20th.
Pretty accurate. Okay, got it, definitely.
Good ballpark.
Gotcha. February 20th, people didn't hear that. Okay.
And that concludes my report tonight.
Thank you very much. Great news across the board. Agenda item number five, Assistant Superintendent's Report. Mr. Haner?
Yes, sir. Mr. Vice President, board members, for our Assistant Superintendent Monthly Report on Operations, as you are aware, we are aspiring a community of achievement. Our mission here in Marion City Schools is to educate and nurture each student in and beyond the classroom, uniting our community and growing partnerships with families today and into the future. First, I want to talk to you about our McKinley Reset, and to thank you for allowing us the opportunity for that reset. It was a full-day retreat. It happened on November the 22nd, from 8:00 to 3:30, where I have a huge packet here that we went through, has lesson plans in it that we went over. We had two sponsors. State Personnel Development Grant was responsible for breakfast, so those are community members. And then RFS Behavioral Health was responsible for the lunch on that day as well. So we pulled in our community partners as well. McKinley's reset topics that were discussed, we discussed the why we are here. We reviewed data and what has led us up to this point. How our mindset can help support how we approach our work. We did circles, restorative circles, on how to teach social skills at school. We have a new process for referring to the office and what that will take place. We will look, what does that reset look like? We talked about that with our teachers. We walked them through every single department area of that building where there was a lesson plan, where everyone heard that common message, so that when our students came back for that reset, that common message was given to our students as well. So that was our reset. I took a picture to your right there of our lunch ladies. Unbelievable, knowing our students and just the attitude that they had as our students walked in first thing in the morning. I had to take a picture of that. As Mr. Murphy talked about, our Future Freshman Night was a huge success. We have brought our eighth graders in on tours, and then we brought them in for our freshman night. As you can see in the middle, Dr. Bolden did a phenomenal job greeting and introducing as the students came through those doors. Staff was around the building. They could take tours, go into the classrooms, talk. We had clubs that were there, ranging from LGBTQ. We had art club. We had key club. Student Council was there. We had choir there that were talking with our students, asking questions. Parents were asking questions. As I walked, the comments from staff members of us doing this was off the chart. Wow, this is phenomenal. Wow. And then to know that we did it within a very short period of time and had that much success. So we were really, really happy with our Future Freshman Night. Couple of other pictures. Our hallways were packed. The Hayesways. Back in November, the Hayesways, and I took this picture because the fifth grades had to do, they're trying to get more hydroponic bays and raised beds at the school. So the three fifth grade classes had to negotiate with Ms. White and ask about fundraising and how they could make money to participate and bring in more hydroponic bays and raised beds. So it was kind of interesting. The particular class here, we're doing artwork, where they were gonna draw pictures and then sell their artwork to get it. And then finally, across our district, we had tree lighting ceremonies. This is Harrison Tree Lighting Ceremony, where our PTO sponsored that. We had hot chocolate and cookies as they lit the tree and then sang Christmas carols. And on behalf of Marion City School, to our board, we wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just want to commend the McKinley staff for being willing and recognizing, hey, we have areas to improve, and they're willing to do it. They didn't just brush over it and pretend everything was fine. Again, the fact that they were willing to open up about this, thank you to Angie Pace and her staff for doing this, and I think it's, again, to be commended, to put that time in and to recognize that things could always get better. So also, the Future Freshman Night, have we gotten any, or are we seeking feedback from those families that attended to see what they liked, what they did, or what their thoughts were?
I don't know if we did, but I think we should do a survey, because that's gonna give us some really good information.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, just to, especially as we start to plan for grant, and even for next year as we do this at Harding, too, to see what they liked. Or they may have thought of something that we didn't, or something that they want to make sure, hey, that was great, make sure we do that again next year, too.
Sure.
So, gotcha.
I do, I will say that I have seen some positive comments on social media, and positive comments from parents talking about how they enjoyed it. One specific one said, "I will not bring my younger children with me when we do this again." It was like, I will bring my future freshmen and, and leave the younger children at home. But most of what I have read is all positive.
Yes, and I agree.
Well, I think Dr. Augman had also mentioned that utilizing our food service was a good idea, because I think there were two Alfredos. One, I mean, was there chicken Alfredo or two different kinds, marinara or whatever. So I think that's a good way. I mean, food always brings, and the masses, and so I think that was good. But I know that you and Mr. Murphy had probably put your heads together and identified some things that we wanted to do differently next year. And, but I, I felt like it was, and I only came at the tail end, but I thought it was a great idea, and I thought it was hugely successful.
Again, thank you for putting in the time for that, no doubt.
Thank you. Yeah, I tell you, for that to come around so in that short time period, I have to give credit to our staff. I mean, everybody worked so well together to work with the Harding Administration as well to put together a tremendous event in a short period of time. So we're working like a well-oiled machine early on this school year, so I'm very happy with that.
And clearly a desire of the community to experience something like that, too.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, we're, one of our goals, and you'll see as a cabinet, as we move forward, is retention and recruitment, paying attention to the data, paying attention to where we're increasing enrollment, paying attention to where we're losing enrollment. And so all the planning we're doing around is very intentional. So we're doing it with intention and purpose to make sure that parents and families know that we're the best place to be, even when they transition from elementary to middle, middle to high school.
Gotcha. Much appreciated.
Yep.
Okay, Agenda Item Six, the Treasurer's Report. Jolene, did you have anything you wanted to present before we move on to the board minute approval?
No, unless you want me to talk about the financials. But it's, they're pretty...
We already got...
Yeah, I mean, you had the forecast last month, that was pretty extensive.
You got it. Okay, Item A then, is Board Minute Approval. Motion to approve Board Minutes from November...
I'm sorry, Mr. Weidling?
Whoops, yes, good.
Is finance gonna give a report then?
We'll hit the committees later.
When we get to committee, you...
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, we got it. Okay, so motion to approve Board Minutes from November 4th and the 18th from 2024. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please?
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, Letter B, Financial Approvals. Motion to approve the following financial items: November checks, November fund balances, and November financial report. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please?
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
And Letter C, Donations. The Treasurer's Report. And letter C, Donations. The Treasurer recommends approval of the following donations. Donation to Grant Musical Account for five hundred dollars from Kathleen O'Shea at the Marion Community Foundation. And donation to the Harding Musical Account for eight hundred dollars, again from Kathleen O'Shea at the Marion Community Foundation. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Extreme thank you.
Yes, continuing to support these two programs, um, very much.
Now, is that a grant we have to, we have to write? We actually have grant writers that do that, or?
I don't think so. I think it's just a donation that they make toward the program.
How do they know that I donate?
Um, somebody from the music department may have reached out.
Okay.
I don't know.
So heavily involved in scholarships at the end of the year and with the community foundations. So, but good question. Yeah, I'm not sure how they, they just volunteer to do it?
I just wondered.
Yeah, me too.
I mean, I know the community foundation has grants that they offer for teachers that different times of the year that teachers can apply and get certain grants. I don't know if this is one of those specific ones.
Yeah, because this, this was just, we received the check and we did, I mean, in the Treasurer's Office, we didn't know it was coming. Somebody else probably did. So we just put it where they, it was requested that we put it.
Not that I want to turn down money. I just want to know.
Yeah. I, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm guessing that somebody from their music departments has reached out to them.
And the family itself has been like, well, supporters of the department too. So.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item Seven, Hearing of the Public. Board of Education recognizes the value to school governance of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation is a time set aside for the board to listen to public comments, but it is not intended as a time for dialogue. The board offers public participation to members of the public in accordance with the procedures below. The board applies these procedures to all speakers and does not discriminate based on identity of speaker, content of the speech, or viewpoint of the speaker. I don't see any forms up front, but I thought I saw somebody filling one out. We have Scott R.M. Bush. Want to speak?
Thank you for your time this evening. Uh, my name is Scott Bush. Uh, I know a few of you already. Uh, I know Mr. Murphy and I, I had some communication with Mr. Haner. Uh, I am the color guard and visual, uh, choreographer for the high school marching band. Uh, I've been here for three years now. I took over the color guard responsibilities last winter. Um, my purpose for speaking with you today, and I'm sure that we can have further discussions, uh, later on, but just very quickly, I wanted to inform you that there are some issues, and I've spoken in, in length with Mr. Murphy about this. He's aware of it, and also with Mr. Haner. There are some issues, uh, with the music boosters that surround, that encapsulate all of the, uh, music organizations here. And while they are working on this right now, there was an incident last night where the color guard, uh, members were denied fundraising at a music event. They were denied to sell cookies at a music event. Uh, there's a parent that's here that's also a staff member, uh, with the school district that witnessed that firsthand. Um, I have some handouts for you, just so that you're all aware. Excuse me. If you could pass this around, please. There's three pages for each. Uh, just so that you're all aware, I have filed a complaint with the IRS regarding the, uh, the music boosters, um, and some of the activity or non-activity that has been happening with the music boosters. The students have been affected by this. I myself have been affected by this. Um, let me real quickly, uh, show you. This is a saber that students use for color guards. This saber is owned by the band, or the school. This is a ten-year-old saber. This is a hazard. And the students have been using this up until last week. I myself have purchased new sabers. These sabers belong to me and this is now what the students use. These sabers are two hundred and twenty-three dollars a piece. Uh, you will also notice that in the second page, um, there is a check, there is a copy of the check stub. Uh, the music boosters here at Marion Harding were supposed to reimburse me for all of the, uh, supplies that were needed for the color guard for the fall. The music boosters didn't do that because they claimed that they didn't have any money. Therefore, it was the, uh, music booster, or the, the president's club from the middle school that had to step up and, uh, pay this, pay this outstanding balance. Uh, it is my understanding that the, uh, music boosters and the band itself will be splitting, uh, as of December thirty-first, January first, twenty-twenty-five, and they will each go their own way and have a separate entity. However, last night's, uh, situation would actually fall under the music boosters, considering that, uh, it's my understanding that, uh, they were, they were informed that this was a conflict of interest. And I, it's a little puzzling that they're a part of the music organization. It was a music event, yet they were denied fundraising. And the things that they were selling, uh, were completely separate and the other organization, the music organization, were not selling those items. We had baked items and they had other goods. So there couldn't have been a conflict of interest with that. Um, additionally, on the third page, you will notice that, uh, there's a bill there. I paid almost four thousand dollars out of my own pocket, uh, and I'm fortunate enough to have a family that supports me through this as well. So through the Minden Hall Foundation, which is my family's own money, um, I have been able to pay for the color guard uniforms that the color guard wore later on in the season and will also wear second, uh, during second semester. Uh, they didn't have the, according to the music boosters, there weren't funds available for those. Uh, and at the point when the, uh, uniforms were first, uh, ready to be made, uh, they went with a local person who didn't have the necessary skill for these. We received them, if you remember, and you were at the foot, if you were at the football game when they debuted the band's new uniforms, the color guard was out there basically in blacks because their uniforms were falling apart. So I therefore had to take it upon myself to make sure that the students had something that was presentable for them to wear for the rest of the season and also into the fall season. Again, there's much more discussion to be had on this. I want you as the board members to be made aware that there is an issue and is definitely affecting the students. I drive ninety minutes, I, uh, drive ninety minutes, three days a week to be here. I'm here for the good of the students. Just so you're aware, here is a copy of my resume. I've been involved in this activity for forty years. When you see the students marching around on the field, that is a specific technique that I have taught them. It comes from a book that is copyrighted and is used throughout the United States. Um, so I would hope that, moving forward, that you would be able to look into this to make sure that all of the students within the music program are represented and not just as it appears a single section of them. Um, there, there are some inherent issues. I will not discuss these issues in open public. I'd be more than happy to discuss them with you. I have a lot more evidence to provide and more information. There are other parents. There are other staff members that also have information to provide to you. But I'm just hoping that, um, in bringing this to your attention, that we can quickly resolve this situation because the students deserve that.
Thank you. And I just thank you for bringing that to our attention. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Do I have questions?
Yes.
So you, um, submitted three, um, documents, uh, for the board to look at. And I'm looking at this, uh, Form thirteen-nine-zero-nine.
Yes.
Um, so you issued that particular complaint, correct?
Yes. I submitted that complaint on the eighteenth, I believe, of October.
And so you submitted this to
The IRS.
The IRS?
Yes.
And, um, had you had any kind of contact with us before?
Um, I have taken, and, thank you. Um, I have taken the necessary steps. I have gone through channels. I spoke with Dr. Bolden. He was well aware of the situation. I bought, uh, he, uh, I provided him also with a narrative
Okay.
Of all the situations that were happening, including the situation last fall where I was not paid for my services from October, or excuse me, yes, from October until January. And that was on the, that was supposedly the responsibility of the music boosters who claimed that they didn't have money. So I went almost three months without pay for my services.
Okay. So is that something that, um, we pay you as a volunteer, the Marion City Schools?
Uh, no, the band boosters usually pay that. This fall though, um, I was under contract through, uh, through a stipend. I was paid via the stipend this fall. That's how, uh, my pay was, was issued this fall. However, I believe for second semester now, I will be back through the band boosters, the new band boosters. But, uh,
Separated and as of January twenty-twenty-five, there are going to be two separate entities?
Yes.
Band and you'll be with the band?
Yes.
Then the actual chorus, music, choir, that kind of stuff?
Yes.
Okay. My other question is, um, I thought we got financials from the boosters.
I haven't received any from the music boosters.
None from music?
We, we requested them several times last year and
Yeah, 'cause I know Olympia.
Yes, she requested them several times and we did not receive.
So we don't have any financials from the music boosters?
Additionally, with my narrative, uh, to Dr. Bolden, I had requested an audit and I'm not quite sure where that is at this point.
You requested an audit, sir?
I requested that the boosters, that the district, the district auditor or treasurer perform an audit
That
On the music boosters.
I'm not, I'm not, I can't do that with the related organization. It would have to be a third party.
Okay. And, but again, you have asked for that and you still haven't received those financials. There is an ongoing situation that you need to be made aware of and it's the students that are suffering.
Mr. Bush, are you still owed this thirty-three-hundred-dollar uniform bill?
Yes. Actually, that's, yes, that's almost thirty-five-hundred dollars. I paid that myself.
And these are, it says eleven at three hundred dollars a piece?
Yes.
Those were the sabers?
No.
No?
That's a, that's a uniform that the
This is the uniform?
It was only used once, uh, with, uh, in the fall season and it was the very last two performances that the group had. The hometown crowd didn't get to see those because the first representative that they had, uh, make them were, were not skilled. So therefore, I had to find someone in town that was skilled enough to make them.
So I thoroughly enjoy the color guard. I was a little afraid when you brought those sabers in. I don't know how those got passed here, but, um, I, I thoroughly, uh, enjoy, um, watching the color guard and the entertainment
Thank you.
That they, they provide. And my, um, you said it best, is if it's affecting our students, then we need to probably get to the root of what's going on because it looks like eleven. Is that, are there eleven students in the color guard?
Yes.
And are any of them seniors?
Uh, there were two that were seniors that are no longer. They're not going to do second semester, but two of those were seniors. Um, just so that you're aware, uh, we had a situation with, with the defective uniforms, that they arrived the day of that football game when they debuted the new, the new, the new band uniform. They were at a point that we couldn't let the students go out in them. That's how poorly made they were. They were supposed, the lady was supposed the next day to have the rest of the costume finished. She didn't have it finished. Her recommendation was that we tape the students into the costume. We had no choice at that point but to pin and tape the students into the costume. We literally had students falling out of the costume twenty minutes before we went on the field. We were able to rectify the situation after that, uh, for the ongoing performances up until the last performance when I could have new costumes made.
And what, what is, um, what is your goal for being here tonight? What is it that you would like to see this board do?
Uh, I'd like to see this board investigate thoroughly into the music booster organization and the gentleman that runs, that is the president slash treasurer of that organization, as well as a staff member of yours, who is his wife. She takes, and I have a situation that I experienced where the choir director, last year in a discussion, removed herself as the choir director and the department chair and placed herself in a situation as the wife defending of her husband. That is
Can we save these conversations for later time?
I sure can.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, this clearly won't be the last discussion, but thank you. Gotcha.
And the reason why we wanted to save it is because it goes into a staff member and we
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yeah, and I appreciate your willingness to do this. Yes.
Yeah, the board
Gotcha. Ms. Dyer, thank you for clarifying that. Thank you, Mr. Bush. Okay, Agenda Item Number Eight, New Business. Letter A, uh, MO, an MOU of Transportation High Roads. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Wibling. Uh, yeah, so we have three MOUs coming, uh, forward today. This is the first of the three. Uh, all three are with OPSI. Uh, first and foremost, I'd like to thank the collaboration with OPSI, um, in really assisting the district, working with the district and trying to rectify, put additional, put a lot of different levels of plans in place to address our transportation shortage. Uh, as all of you know, and, you know, most school districts across the state, across the country, still are struggling with transportation, meaning drivers. So, um, this helps us rectify and put some planning in place to help address those. So, first MOU, uh, the purpose is to contract for transportation services specifically, uh, related to the transportation students of High Roads School. And it's, uh, through collaboration and, and the district union, uh, coming together to do that. Uh, what you will see in MOUs internally is they're broken down into three sections. One is the background. Uh, two is if there's any current collective bargaining agreement language that exists, which is in the middle section. And then the last section would be the agreement. So whatever we're doing in the agreement or changing contract language or adjusting it, uh, to resolve the, the issue. So again, uh, this is contracting services out, getting agreement from, um, OPSI to do that for High Roads Bus. And the term of that agreement starts January first, two thousand and twenty-five and extends through June thirty as to two thousand and twenty-five. In the meantime, we will continue all of our efforts in resolving the shortage, uh, the transportation shortage. And, uh, we will revisit this MOU in June to kind of see where we're at as we prep for next school year, um, as well. So that's the first one. Would you like to go and just the next one?
Yeah, we'll just go on. We'll do one at a time here, I guess.
Call one. Okay.
So again, to make it official, Superintendent recommends the approval of an MOU between MCS and OPSI, that Marion City Schools may enter into a contract with an external vendor for transportation services for the High Road bus route. Uh, do we have a motion?
A motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So, I'm sorry, was that just the first one?
Yeah, just for letter A, just so we, one at a time. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes. And then letter B, I'll read and then turn it back over to Superintendent Murphy. Uh, MOU Transportation Columbus School for Blind. Superintendent recommends the approval of an MOU between Marion City Schools and OPSI, that Marion City Schools may enter into a contract with the transportation contractor for services for the Columbus School for the Blind Van Route.
Yeah, it's, and that's exactly what it's, very similar to the last one. Again, to help rectify our, some of our challenges with the shortage, uh, would be contracting, this allows us to contract services out, uh, to transport, uh, for any student, uh, that goes to Columbus School the blind, uh, using a van route. And again, same term of the contract, January first, two thousand and twenty-five through June thirty, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes. Letter C, MOU Transportation Field Trips. The Superintendent recommends the approval of an MOU between Marion City Schools and OPSI, that Marion City Schools may bid field trips for two weeks in advance instead of one week. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, so ultimately, uh, we've been in situations in the past where we have, uh, athletic events and we need Yeah, so ultimately, we've been in situations in the past where we have athletic events and we need transportation for those events. Contractually, we have a bidding process that starts one week, that's a one-week period starting the following Monday from each time the meeting occurs. This would allow us to have that meeting two weeks prior to that, which would allow the district more time to find, to find drivers. And then ultimately, if we don't find drivers, we then have the right to contract services out within a specific window. Again, this contract is June, January 21st, goes through June, and we'll revisit that June 30th of 2026.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes. And just to say thank you for the collaboration between Opsy and Marion City Schools to help fix a problem that everybody is having right now. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Letter D, Marion City Schools Preschool Monthly Tuition. The Superintendent recommends a new preschool tuition model for the 2025-2026 school year. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, so I want to make a couple of comments on this, on the why, and then at that point, I'd like to ask Ms. Jen Sher to come up to present a couple of items to the board on this one. So one, I think, the why, cost of the program, so we're operating at a loss currently with early, with the preschool programming, and that is going to increase yearly. I think the estimation is between $400,000 and $500,000 next coming year. There are increasing costs of families. In this new model we're proposing, the increased costs are for families that are 200% above the poverty level. So it's a model that really reflects those families that would be in a better position to, to afford the, the programming. Three, I think it really supports our program quality, meaning it allows us to improve our staffing model, get better teachers and so forth, and allows us to enhance our learning materials and also purchase more resources as well. I will say, you'll see with the information that Ms. Sheridan will, will present, with the changes, we still will be the lowest out of 10 districts that, that provide these preschool services. So we are certainly making recommendations around understanding the community that we serve and also taking a look at those comparables across the state with some of the other districts that offer early childhood programming and making sure our, our costs are low compared to the others. So with that being said, I'd like to have Ms. Sheridan come up.
Hello. Do I need to turn this on? Hello? Okay. Thank you. So like Mr. Murphy said, we operate mostly under the Early Childhood Education Grant, and that intention of that grant is for low-income communities to get access to high-quality childcare or which we, concerned, referred to as childcare at the state level, but it's preschool. So what my hope is by doing this model, one, it will actually make preschool free for those students who are ECE eligible. And I sent you guys, I gave you guys a handout, so what to be ECE eligible, you have to be 200% or below on the poverty scale. So for example, this year, according to the poverty scale, as a family of four, if they're making $62,000, $62,000, they would be considered ECE eligible. And then it goes through a range of how many, yeah, there's, it goes, depends how many people are living in your household and how much money all those people in your household are bringing in. Once you hit over 200%, is when you are no longer ECE eligible per this grant guidelines. Other ways to be ECE eligible, you have to also be not kindergarten age. You have to be, you can't be five on or before August 1st. And you'll have to be in one of our five-day-a-week programs because the grant has our guidelines that we have to follow. Students on IEPs, as long as they're not five and they're also in a five-day-a-week program, are also ECE eligible, no matter what their income is, because they have that disability that makes them ECE. So in '23, '24, we had all the student, or all the families that were eligible to pay, which was 100 out of the 274, we brought in $12,000. So that was, full tuition was paid. Up till this year, as of right now, we've brought in $13,960 and we have $800 outstanding. We actually have less right now in our preschool than we, obviously than we did at the end of the year last year. But we have more students that are paying the $180 per year, so that's why there's a little bit of difference and we're actually bringing in more money this year. So right now, the fee structure, and it was this way this year, and it's been like this for a long time, is there, you pay an annual fee. So you're either $40, $60, or $180. So the most anybody pays right now is $180 per year, which breaks down to about $18 per month. And what the proposal is, is to, for those non-ECE eligible families, is to make it $100 a month, like Mr. Murphy said, just to bring in more revenue and hopefully improve program quality. And I would love to give teachers some autonomy and having a small budget to bring in supplies and manipulatives and things like that to go with the curriculum that we provide.
While you're up there then, well, let's do a, Jen, if you wouldn't mind staying there. So the Superintendent recommends a new preschool tuition model for 25-26 school year. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, discussion. All right, so if we were to pass this monthly tuition, then where does that put Marion City Schools? And we, if Mr. Murphy had mentioned other school districts in the area that are providing...
Uh, yeah, so I shared with you guys, I'm a local comparison tuition. I think the most, and I think Bucyrus may cha, charge 110 a month. Pleasant, I think if I, I didn't print it out with me, depends if you're full day or half day, but they charge up to like 340 a month.
360?
360, thank you. So I think everybody, it's, it's kind of all over the place. I think there's a lot of 180 a month on there, I feel like, I know I personally pay 140 a week. So I think it's a little bit all over, if you're private or if you're public school or things like that. So we went with the 100. We originally had talked about 180, we decided to do the 100 just because we do recognize our community has more financial needs, you know, other than versus the county schools or surrounding areas.
So if this were to pass, we would still be more than competitive compared to the other
Yes.
services provided by other districts?
Yes, and I think it's something that we talk about, you know, I know some teachers had some concerns with it, this could affect enrollment. It could, I don't think it will, only because I don't know where else they would go, and I think they would pay more wherever else they would go. But then I think we, you know, we look at that next year and we review it, and if it does decline enrollment, then we make it, we go a different direction, which is, I think, perfectly fine. And the reason we talked, we've talked about this since Mr. Haner was the supervisor for preschool, eventually going up more. Why we kind of decided to bite the bullet now is because ECE and preschool is completely changing everything. They're moving departments and the guidelines are changing, and so how our families enroll are going to change too. And job and family services actually has to approve them as eligible or not. So we just thought, if everything's changing now, and we're doing a lot of, you know, the program's going to look different, the manuals are going to look different, then let's, let's just do it all now. And we wanted to bring it to you now because we're going to start enrollment this year at the end of January. So we wanted to make sure families knew ahead of time before they come to enrollment what to expect.
So Mr. Wibbling, to really, I want to make sure your question is answered, because as I look at this chart, and if we're charging $100 a, a month for those families, what I see in here, Bucyrus is 110, so we would be the lowest in the area. And that, so the highest charge is Pleasant, full day is 360, and then go Pleasant part-time, which is four days, 180. Delaware City, 175, Owen Tangi, 170. Marysville, 150, Elgin, 150. Marion County, ESC, 125, Bucyrus, 110, and then we would be 100.
Yes.
Correct, so we are still the, the best choice.
And ours are kind of full-time?
Our preschools, um, in preschool, no, so all of our students go two hours and 45 minutes a day, so they're, they're part-time. Some students go five days a week and some students go four days a week, depending on the type of classroom they're in.
What are full-time schedules, at two hours?
Oh, yes, yes, yeah. There are, I think there's only one, or there's, I think their ESC has a full-day option maybe, and then I know Pleasant has a full-day option, but the rest are usually that halftime.
Well, I know we talked about it at the curriculum meeting, you did an excellent job, thanks for making it really clear. We even brought it near name because we know how you feel about early childhood education and how it can reflect on test scores and stuff. So we try to cover what each board member's bias or non-bias was as far as this is concerned. And the important thing was barriers. We did not want to make this an untenable task for, for parents, but we've got to work on transportation. We know that, you know, and our other roles.
And we will be flexible, I mean, we will offer, like even now with the 40, 60, 180, we offer, like some people have only paid partial this year, and Wendy of Ansickle, who's our secretary, she works with them throughout the, throughout the year and getting the rest of the money collected. You know, so if somebody can't pay it fully the next one month, then we'll work with them the next month.
And didn't we talk about capping in some areas to...
Yeah, you'd mentioned maybe if they have multiple children in our preschool, if we, and so that's something definitely we could discuss.
Great, and, and again, we did talk about it on the curriculum committee, but being on the curriculum committee and being on the finance committee and understanding the value and importance of early childhood education, we definitely need this. But being able to sustain it over time with our five-year forecast, and also being able to get the children the tools and the manipulatives and some of the things they need, this could help offset some of those costs. And again, if we're, we're talking about the families who absolutely cannot afford to this, it doesn't impact them at all. So we continue to keep that, and again, we are the lowest, the lowest anywhere around us. So it sounds like a win-win situation to me.
Thank you, good work.
Thank you.
Okay, my last question, if this is to pass here in the next few seconds or minutes, have we devised a plan to communicate the information to the public yet?
We have not devised a plan, we're just right now working on our enrollment packet that we will have ready to go by probably mid-January. You will see our notice of enrollment, I asked Mrs. Franklin to post it on Monday, so on Facebook that'll come out, just the dates of enrollment. I plan on writing a full letter to our families' enrollment, just because the whole enrollment process is so much more cumbersome now, I want to explain why we have to do it, and this would be part of that.
Sounds good, okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, agenda item number nine, new business agreements and contracts. Letter A, Jennifer DeAngelo. The Superintendent recommends the approval of a contract between Marion City Schools and Jennifer DeAngelo to provide speech and language pathology services to students in the Marion City School District. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Wibbling. So yeah, this section, we will have five recommendations of, five recommendations of new business. First one is an independent contract with DeInfer, or I'm sorry, Jennifer DeAngelo. This is for speech, language, pathology services to students in the district. The services may include, but are limited to, speech and language assessments, IEPs, consulting with educators, parents, or other professionals if necessary, accurate records of services provided, and you'll see the term of agreement is December 17th, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. Hours of service is up to 20 hours per week, and then you'll see some of the other information as part of this agreement. Termination, we can terminate the agreement within four weeks of written notice as well. I will tell you, there is a recommendation and a compensation of $53 per hour. Just to do some comparisons about these other services that we're getting, Ease is a company that we contract with that we pay $95 an hour. CASA is a company that we pay $103 an hour. And McKibben and Monte, we pay $150 an hour for these same services. So $53 per hour is a bargain. Now I do want to mention that we've had some conversation with our attorneys around whether this person would have to pay STRS or not, or if the district would have to pay it. So one, there's three options, and people do this all over the place. So if the district would pay 28% of this person's salary into STRS, then we could certainly keep it at $53 per hour. If the district pays 14% and the employee, I wouldn't say employee, but the independent contractor would pick up 14%, then it would be $60.42 would be the hourly rate. If the district picks up 0% and the independent contractor pays all 28%, then the rate would be $67.84. I do want to state that I've vetted this through legal. This is very common, I would tell you Toledo, I did it probably over 100 times, and it's very common to get independent contractors to do this work. So my recommendation on this contract would be, it's $53 per hour, but in, I would like to amend this to be able to, the district have the ability to change that $53 to $60.42 or $67.84 based upon whether the requirement is, is that we're going to require the contractor to pay 28%, 14%, or 0% into STRS.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
So depending on what we pick up is the hourly rate, 53, 60, or 67? So when will we know how much that's going to be?
Yeah, so I, I think as soon as the treasures division makes a decision on which avenue we're going to go, we can notify the board ASAP. And we do have to email, if that's, if that's okay.
Anything else? Okay, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Item 9B.
9B is 21st Century Grant MOU with Marion Family YMCA. This is a contract services agreement. It's an agreement for $200,000 a year for the 21st Century Grant at Garfield and George Washington. It is grant-funded. YMCA has been assigned the fiscal agent in this contract. Included in the agreement is $32,000 for funding for summer programming. Also, it's for students, that program is programs for those schools that are identified as Garfield and George Washington. Also included in the agreement is a $1,500 site management fee per building for the grant paid to the YMCA. Again, it's paid for by grant funds.
Do we have a motion?
Motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes. Motion carries. Letter C, Program Studies, 2025-2026.
Yes, Mr. Wibbling, this is a program of studies. This is, I'd like to thank everybody in the short timeframe we had around this program of studies. We are making some recommendations of changes moving forward on the district. It's been a team effort through our cabinet, our high school administration, our counselors, and our teaching and learning department especially. Highlights, there's a highlight page provided here that covers any of the changes in the document for next school year. We're asking for approval so that the scheduling can begin as soon as next week. So if you look in the Program Studies of Highlights, 25-26, you'll see all the new courses that are listed there. It's a combination of, of several different things, like for example, language arts, that the first bullet there, Vance and Metta, Took, Tookography, how do I say that?
Cinematography?
Cinematography, thank you. Is new, poetry is, that's new, that's a semester, and then world mythology is the semester, is new. So if you go down through that, like for example, the math, Algebra 1A, Algebra 1B, I think this is genius from our teaching and learning department, I've seen other districts do it with lots of success. We have two groups of kids coming in, you know, we have the groups, the group of kids that are passing the state assessment, and we have the group that are not being successful in the state assessment. So we are breaking up in a way where those students that are struggling in math and are not passing the state assessments, then as they come in, as, as, as they come into the school year, they can take Algebra 1A and then they can take Algebra 1B to help more prepare them for the next step of their mathematical career here in high school. And so it's, it's really, to some extent, double dosing, I like to call it, and some people call it that. So we're hoping that can be successful. You'll see AP pre-calculuses... Uh, so we're hoping that could be successful. You'll see AP pre-calculus is being replaced by pre-calculus. Uh, and then as you go through their social studies, uh, the modern world history is being shifted to one credit. It was a half-credit. Uh, we have world affairs, which is new, which is, uh, half-credit, pop culture, half. Uh, the CCP, uh, you'll see those classes that are listed there. Now that we, uh, with the CCP classes, uh, these will be taught at the building, uh, which is new. Uh, we now have certified teachers in these areas, which is big for us as well. Some of the CTE programming you see there, the leadership and community engagement, family consumer science, half is new. The global foods, family consumer science, half is new. Animal health, ag, uh, agribusiness, new. And then what I'm really excited about is the next four bullets regarding, um, our teacher's pathway, Education Academy, uh, which helps us develop a Grow Your Own program here in Marion City Schools. So we can advocate for our students, uh, going into the education field to be teachers. Uh, gives them an opportunity in collaboration with, uh, Ohio State Marion Capit, Campus to earn, um, up to fifteen credits of college credit before they step out of, um, high school. I'd love to get that to the point where it could be two years. Um, ideally, you can imagine that saves our families, our kids, some money, uh, with that collaboration. And of course, I'd love to get to the point where, once they're at Marion, we could get them to sign a pre-contract to come right back here and serve us here, service us here at Marion City School. So may need to negotiate some things with the union on, uh, you know, enticing that a little bit, but hopefully we can have some success with that as well. So we're really excited about, about that one. And as you know, we have such a teacher shortage everywhere throughout the country. It's still a hot topic. At an ASPA, um, board meeting today, where I'm a legislative committee, it's a national organization, still a hot topic at the national level. Um, right now, I think the data suggests that, uh, teachers with a bachelor's degree compared to other bachelor's degrees coming out of college and get their first job are twenty thousand dollars paid less on average. Uh, so there is a dynamic there that needs, still needs to be addressed. And I know the, you know, the, the federal government has tried to address that in the past, um, and I don't think it's going anywhere anytime soon because it's, the teacher shortage is still going to be an issue until drastic measures are taken. So very excited about that one. And then lastly, the elective, uh, business, Spanish is a new course is for those students that have become very fluent, um, in Spanish, uh, to help with their fluency, and we continue to challenge them along the way. And so I may or may not have done a, a great job with that. So I'm going to ask Dr. Gerley Ogden to chime in on anything that I may have missed.
I've, I've got a question to ask her, but I'll wait for discussion.
Okay, well, let's move on to that part then. So, uh, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Dyer.
So I thought it was interesting, Dr. Ogden, um, you, the rationale that teaching and learning has with, uh, the modern history shift, and I think the public would like to know that. And then my second question is, the CCP classes are going to be here at Harding. Um, I truly like that because does that mean our, uh, students will stay on our campus instead of going off-site? Because I think that was one of the things that, um, was talked about last year is like these, these students leave our campus, and then they don't feel a sense of community at Harding. So I think, uh, that's a brilliant move right there, keeping our kids. And who are these staff members? Will they be MTC staff? Or will they be ours? So those are my two questions.
Okay. So first question, what was the first one again?
Oh, thank you, sorry.
Explain to us and curriculum. World history. So what we've decided, our incoming freshmen take world history. It is currently a half semester. Um, and then what happens is generally they'll obviously take a history elector for the other half. There are a few options for freshmen. What we've done is we've talked to the history department, um, and the one teacher specifically who will be mostly teaching world history, their opinion is to teach the course all year for full credit. And the basis of that was when we compared our freshman passage rates of, uh, world history compared to the elective options, the failure rates increased significantly in the other options. So world history, um, just at a quick draw, the failure rate was still higher than I want, but it was still forty percent. But the failure rate in, um, for example, African-American studies for the freshmen was eighty percent. But then when they take it sophomore, uh, yes, sophomore, junior, or senior year, their passage rate increases. So what we're finding is, um, I think it's the difficulty of the course and the content. It's not necessarily, um, that they don't get those options. We just are going to bump that to their, um, after they completely successfully finish world history freshman year. We just feel like also that's creating a lot of course options for our freshmen. Um, so they're a little bit more scattered through, you know, through the year, every semester with new course changes. This will keep some consistency, at least in their core required classes, um, and eliminate some class changes. So that's world history.
I was approached, uh, future freshman night by a staff member in that department who was so appreciative of the fact that the department was listened to. Um, actually, their advice was taken and considered. So thank you very much.
Yeah, well, good.
Wanted to pass that along.
They're the ones doing it every day.
Thank you for recognizing.
Sure.
Well, and, and as a, a person who taught modern world history, I can't imagine how you would teach it in a semester. Because we, I mean, as a reality, as Americans, we are so egocentric, and we think everything started with us. The reality is, everything has started on a world level, and we are secondary to that. And so it, it also sets a foundation then for the American history, which makes that so much easier to understand. Here's what's going on in the world. Here's how we, so to do it in a semester, I never understood when the state made that change.
We're just trying to lock down, um, and give our freshmen a stronger foundation before they, you know, continue in high school, because just getting here is a different change for them anyway. Um, with regard to CCP, so these courses, we do offer these courses right now, but again, they're off-campus. We are able to transition those to be taught by our staff here at Harding. Um, we just finished applying for the CCP teacher grant with the, um, Central Ohio ESC, we're, uh, part of the consortium. And, um, we have about seven teachers who have expressed interest to get CCP credentialed. So if that grant's awarded, then they will be able to get their call, their credentials free through the grant. And the idea is just to continue to build our CCP courses on-site so that our children are able to attend Harding High School, but get, you know, their desired college credits. So, does that answer?
Yeah, I love that.
Your question.
Best guess in terms of the, I too argue that our, I want as many of our students to stay here on campus as possible.
And right now, I will say, sorry, I don't mean to.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
Um, we have two CCP courses on-site now and forty-seven students. So you'll, that's all. So you'll see that those course additions will help amplify that. Those are the children staying here right now. Their majority are going off campus.
Okay, I'm going to change my question then, instead of asking for a specific percentage. Is that our goal moving forward, is to have more students here on campus?
Yes, yes. If we can keep them at Harding and keep them, um, their core content here, give them elective options, we want to be able to, yes, we want them to graduate high school with college credits, but we would love for them to be a part of our family here. Yes.
Right, and they don't have to worry about transportation, getting back and forth.
And they can still get all the college credits they want on-site.
And the cost of the district is lower if we do it here.
Yeah. And I think for a lot of them too, going off-campus, you know, they're, they're going to two schools. I think sometimes that they don't feel like a part of any one thing. Um, so hopefully that helps, keep them together.
If there's anything we can do, let us know and.
Yep.
I think we all like that option of keeping them here.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Any other discussion on that?
I, I do have, so I, I did have one more thing, and I, I did talk to Dr. Ogden about this. But the new teacher academy that is coming in, um, currently those classes are weighted at a one-point-zero. And my question was, is that going to limit some of our college students from taking that? Because we know that our college students are vying and fighting to get the highest GPA possible that they can get. So I've asked her to look into, you know, could we possibly weight that a little bit higher so that our kids who we know are going to college and are fighting to get, will take those classes if they choose, as opposed to saying, well, I can't do that right now because that'll impact my GPA. And so I've just asked Dr. Ogden if she would look into it, and so she's going to do that.
And I, I think the bigger, um, it's deeper than just that career pathway. I think, um, we'll spend some time looking at properly weighting the right CTE courses. A lot of them have vertical articulation to college credits, so we want to make sure that we're weighting them accurately. Um, the thing about the new teacher pathway also is there is, um, an alignment to OSUM where they can, like, uh, Mr. Murphy said, they'll be able to graduate high school if they do the whole pathway. And then the OU, OSUM articulation courses, they will be able to leave with a freshman year under their belt. Um, and also, we are a part of the Ohio Grow Your Own Teacher Grant. So we have three high school seniors right now that are applying for the grant. What you have to do is be in a district that qualifies, which we qualify. We are a high-needs district for teacher hires. Um, we will submit their applications, and if they are awarded the grant, it pays up to seventy-five hundred a year in tuition from the state of Ohio, um, and they commit to working for Marion for their home district for four years after. So we do have three seniors applying for that. Um, a couple of them, their parents actually teach for us, so, um, so I, I'm hoping to see this evolve. But yes, we will look into weights. If we, you know, we are asking for the program of study approval because our freshmen are actually scheduling this week. Um, when we get back, the week of January seventh, upperclassmen start scheduling. But we, if we adjust weights, we would bring an amendment back to the board and then also, you know, notify our students. So it doesn't necessarily stop the flow of what we're doing. We would just inform our students, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes. So on nine, correct?
Yes.
Okay, nine D, Grant Chiller's Resolution.
Yeah, nine D, Grant Chiller's Resolution is, uh, resolution to repair grants chilled water lines. The, uh, water lines run underground, uh, from the building to the chiller. Uh, these lines are eight to ten feet deep. Uh, the best solution to fixing the, the leaking pipes is to do an internal pipelining system. So if you look at this contract, um, it provides the rationale to the resolution. Uh, it's asking permission for the superintendent to, uh, or solidify the superintendent, the treasurer and director of operations, um, uh, to work towards, uh, work with council, negotiate, um, and execute an agreement with a contractor, um, in the projected amount not to exceed the contract sum. You'll see that, uh, the project is in an amount of twenty-nine thousand, six-hundred-twenty-seven dollars, uh, there. Um, and it's not to exceed seventy-five thousand, and it does give a ten percent amount not to exceed, uh, for change orders as well. And that, so, um, yeah, that's it.
Okay, and correct me if I'm wrong, due to the estimated cost, we were not required to shop around, but we still did so, correct?
Jake, you want to respond to that?
Jake.
Yep.
Yeah, we were still required to get three bids.
We worked okay.
Well, board policy ending over ten thousand dollars. Um, I shopped around to four other companies, uh, waited about two weeks, didn't hear anything back from them. So that's why I got hold of the attorneys, and they drafted this language for us.
Gotcha. All right, thanks for the due diligence. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Looks like the contract says the Marion Local School District, should we change that to the Marion City School District Board of Education?
Marion Local. Yeah, I mean, that should be Marion City.
Yeah, we'll get that fixed before the signing.
Yeah, thank you. Good catch. Anything else? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes. Agenda item nine E, Transportation, High Road.
Yeah, so this is actually a, a contract, um, that really stems off the MOU with OPEC. So because of the MO with OPEC, we now then, uh, can get a contract going with Ohio Specialty Services around those, that High Road bus route. Um, so, uh, the cost that associated with that, we're very happy with the, the price we were able to get it at, at, um, fifty-seven hundred dollars per month, providing the morning and the afternoon transportation services. Um, and it's prorated, uh, depending on whether there's no school. We have weeks where there's professional development, holidays, that type of thing. And we're able, if you really run the numbers on our internal costs associated with the transportation, we came, we've come pretty close to, to meeting that. So is it a little bit more expensive? Yes. Is it required? Yes, because we, we have a shortage.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer, Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes. Okay, moving on to agenda item number ten, Executive Session. Do we have a motion to go in Executive Session for this?
I think we need to go into Executive Session, but I know we have one, um, item eighteen. You want to do business first and then go in at the end of the meeting? Is that cool with everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
So we can wait?
Yeah, you got it. That's fine. Okay, then moving on to item number eleven, Amendments to the Consent Agenda. Are there any needs for changes to be made to the upcoming consent agenda?
I don't believe so.
Okay, seeing that there are none. Uh, number twelve, Consent Calendar. Uh, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one motion in the form listed below. Board will follow Board Policy zero-one-six-five-point-one, Section E, in regards to the consent agenda. Superintendent recommends approval of all consent agenda items. Employment is specifically conditioned on and subject to successful background checks, receipt and final administrative review of all application records, and receipt of all necessary documentation. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, no. And I know you have looked up the letters, so we're voting to approve items B through?
J.
B through J. That's it. Uh, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes. The motion carries. Number thirteen, there were no items removed from the consent agenda. Uh, number fourteen, Board of Announcements, uh, in terms of, let's see, letter A, Future Board Meetings. Do we have a list of those dates yet?
No, you have, we will do that at the organizational meeting.
So that is coming up. Okay.
And don't we have, do we have a date for the organizational meeting?
That's what we'll set.
That, we'll move on that later.
Got it.
Yep.
Number seventeen.
Did Mr. Murphy have a suggestion too for the Harding meeting? No?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
The Harding meeting, didn't we have a, do we have a date for that or no?
Our work session.
Uh, I'd have to check and see what that date is. I don't think we have a date for that.
Okay.
Okay, so during the organizational meeting, we can set that.
Okay.
One thing I want us to keep in mind, uh, it was recommended to me that we should consider, uh, if we can, go out to Tri-Rivers and have a meeting. Um, and then also, we still need to get to the bus garage, correct? If possible, yes. Got it. Big smile on the back. A shock.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Uh, so we will revisit that during the organizational meeting. Um, number fifteen, Standing Committee Reports. I will report out from the, uh, athletics or the extracurricular, uh, committee meeting that we had recently. Numbers continue to rise and, in terms of participation, and then also public opinion concerning this, uh, department has been fantastic. Uh, again, thank you so much for, um, Director Kearns and, and his assistants, the coordinators, and the amount of time that they are putting in for this. A couple of things that were discussed, um, the success of the Foot, Ohio football, or the soccer team, excuse me, I almost said football, I guess that's what it is, uh, that played their games here, um, in Marion, and a lot more games than we had expected, very well received by the community. Uh, we are also looking into, uh, fostering the relationships that they have already created amongst themselves and our, our elementary schools too, to, again, to, um, initiate more involvement in that sport too. One other thing, and I know that there are discussions that are taking place, band uniforms and choir robes. Uh, there's a huge dry cleaning bill that is, uh, annually part of the music department budget. Uh, that's further discussions coming with that. And then also something else that I've heard mentioned a few times is a, is a desire and perhaps a need, uh, for final forms, which is traditionally used. a need, for final forms, which is traditionally used in the world of athletics, but for that to be used district-wide. So again, things that we'll discuss at a future date. So do we have anything to report from buildings and grounds?
Yeah, we met last Monday as a subcommittee discussing the upcoming cost that's gonna associate with our security for our doors. I think that'll be coming down the pipeline here in the next coming months on what we need to do as far as the district. Also discussed our ongoing conversations on safety, building safety, what that looks like, what steps the district is recommending us to take as a board. So we'll have more report out on that in January. Discussed all the MOUs Jake and Mr. Murphy and Mr. Haner had brought to the table here today. Also wanted to discuss some, some of the background stuff that Mr. Kroski's doing as far as cybersecurity assessment for our district. I think that's important, that we're cognizant of that realm. Mentioned the Grant Chiller, we passed the necessary steps for that. I know we'd also discussed different options as far as what we're gonna do with our Chromebooks. We're gonna stay with the company we use now as far as the overall product. It's just easier from a parts and mechanic standpoint for that part, for our tech department. So Jake also looked into the grant that we applied for from the Performing Arts Center. We thought maybe we could look at using that money elsewhere. He received communication from Senator Reinicki that is in fact only earmarked for that specific grant. So we do, as a district, need to let them know what our plans are with that grant, probably here in the short term.
Did they give us a deadline for that or not?
Jake, is there a deadline?
No.
They even began Friday, that's what we're gonna do. But I said, no, we're not sure.
Okay. Couple of projects ongoing, still the restoration of the transportation building. I think weather's played a little role in that. And then our next meeting is scheduled for January 13th at 3:00 PM at Church Street. Is Dyer gonna miss anything?
No.
Good job.
Okay, anything from curriculum? I know we've heard a lot, but there's always.
Right, so curriculum met. The first thing that we did, we had a presentation by the Peace and Freedom Committee. And so they have a new project going that is called Marion Looks Like Me. And there were six authors who came. Laura Troutman and Andrea Edmonds are the co-founder and administrators for this. So the Peace and Freedom Foundation, which started in 2007, has done the Martin Luther King Breakfast. Well, they are now expanding out and so they have written books. And so they brought the books to us and talked about the point and purpose and how those books can relate and hit the curriculum for Marion City Schools. And so several of the authors were there and talking about their books, which was really neat. And so we looked at those and we are now evaluating those and trying to figure out where we can place those in Marion City Schools and where they fit best. But it's just neat to have our local authors and have our kids read stuff from our local authors and realize that they too could become an author later on. So we are working on that. And the interesting thing, all the proceeds from those books actually goes right back to the Peace and Freedom Committee organization. So it's a nonprofit to get those and work back in. So we talked about that. That was a really interesting presentation. We talked about preschool a lot. We talked about the high school course of study. We talked about the modern world history and the reasons, which again, we've already talked about on those. So those were our main topics. Mrs. Dyer, did I miss anything?
No.
Finance.
So finance committee also met. One of the big things we did was with Jake also. And when we're talking about, you know, the building and grounds and doing the safety, all of those things come with a financial cost. And so those financial costs then hit and they cross committee meetings. So we looked at a lot of what those things are and tried to prioritize and trying to figure out how those things fit within our budget because we absolutely want to keep our students safe. But we also know that we haven't figured out how to make money grow on trees yet. So don't we have a, we have a program, a CTE thing?
Yes, we do.
Agriculture, we're gonna try to, you know.
Get Mrs. Pitts on.
Figure out how to make, get that money tree actually growing. But no, seriously, you know, how do we, how do we take all of these things? We talked about the chiller because we know all these big ticket items that are coming and things that need to be fixed. And so all of those have a financial piece to them. And so it was really looking at a lot of that. And then the other thing that we talked about was getting started with a treasury valuation and starting that process.
Okay, and then the last one for policy and personnel. Last time we met, I'm just, let everybody know, get your reading glasses ready if you have them or need them because there's quite a few that are coming. It's just a lot of policies that need to be updated by Marion City Schools. So yes, as I take mine off. One other thing that the board does need to consider, and we can't do anything about it tonight, we would have to, I believe, change the policy for this. But as Mr. Murphy had mentioned in his board update, to move forward more quickly, but, you know, still being responsible with it, for us to consider allowing the first reading at a policy and personnel committee meeting to be considered the first public reading of that. Now, with that being said, that would fall on me as a committee chair to communicate with the other board members after you have received the proposed policy changes, to communicate with me any concerns, any questions, any recommendations that you have that you would want to let the committee hear about. And then that way, we could have that discussion, but that way, it would be able to count as the first reading. And then we would do a second formal reading at the board meeting. Again, not something to decide tonight, but definitely something to chew on for a bit. Mr. Murphy, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, I just think that's something to consider. Any districts that have boarding committee structures typically, I mean, legal in the past, any, you know, Toledo and other districts I've, you know, consulted with, they've used the board committee as the first reading. Helps expedite the process, especially I think we're in a situation in our district where we're behind on some policies. And I think, you know, we like to get some, have some rapid fire to catch up a little bit in some areas, so I think that may be beneficial for us. I certainly could reach out to Bricker just to make sure that they would provide confirmation that we're okay doing that. But in my past, you know, I've always got the green light to do that, so.
And those committee meetings are public meetings, so if the public wants to attend to hear these and the discussions, they are more than welcome. And again, transparency's always been a big thing for us. Okay, agenda, item number 16. Whoops, I think I missed student achievement. Ms. Dyer, is there anything else that we wanted to add tonight? Gotcha. Okay, all right. Number 16, information and discussion items. As we had just mentioned, we had the first reading for board policy updates. We were all sent those. You have Board of Education Draft Policy 5320 concerning immunization and Board of Education Draft Policy 6240, Board of Revision and Complaints. So again, you all have access, including the public, to those. Okay? All right, number 17 on the agenda, letter A, the organizational meeting. And here's where we will all need to check our calendars, I assume, to set a date on which we're gonna have this. 6:00 PM will be the time. And as I was reminded at the beginning of the rough start of this meeting, that the term begins January 1st, so we would obviously like to have that meeting as soon as we possibly could. We usually meet as a board, well, I don't wanna jump ahead of ourselves, so let's, what are we talking?
It just has to be within the first fifteen days of the month. That's the requirement.
Yeah.
I mean, in the past, we have had our work sessions on the first Monday of the month. So would January 6th work? That is the first Monday.
I have no problems with that. The Policy and Personnel Committee would also be meeting, I believe. Or are the committees permitted to meet prior to the organizational or not?
Just gotta be careful about how many people are.
Yes, okay. And that's the concern that we always have. So, and then also extracurricular had planned to do that as well. I'm fine with that Monday at 6:00 though.
My just, my comment was, this has been done this way in the past, but it's also been set different. The regular meeting for January, sometimes it's right after the organizational meeting where we could set it, or just to, just as a thought, we could, just need to know that as well.
We had the organizational and then we went right into the board meeting.
So if it's the 6th, I won't have financials, but that doesn't mean you can't have them, have it.
So our regular meeting would be January 20th, is that correct?
Yeah, that's Martin Luther, that's okay, dang.
Okay, so.
But we could do it on the 21st.
Yeah, if we make the regular meeting the 21st.
And that's, and that's fine.
And then we have.
Are we within our number of days then if we do the 21st?
Well, no, that would be for the regular meeting. You would still have to have an organizational meeting.
I'd say the organizational on the 6th, like you could recommend it, and then we just have our regular meeting on the 21st.
It's up on the 6th though. Well, the, is that when Marion City Schools comes back, on the 6th?
The 6th.
Okay. I don't have a problem. I think last year we met on the 8th, so.
Any objections to that first Monday?
I'm good.
Good.
I'm good for the 21st too.
Mrs. Dyer, are you?
I'm good with that, yeah.
Okay.
January 6th?
Yes, January 6th at 6:00 PM. Okay, and again, as I was informed.
Well, need a motion for this one, please.
Nope, sorry, yep. Trying to get out of here, set a record again. Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
There you go. Further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
And letter B, president pro tem. Again, with the information I was given at the beginning of the meeting, even though that we will all be back, we do need to select a president pro tem as the terms begin on the 1st. I would nominate President Ratliff to be the president pro tem until the organization meets again in January.
Would the apt be here in order to be nominated?
Not for, not for.
Okay. I'll second that.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Number 18, other authorizations, resolutions, et cetera. Anything else?
Are we?
We are gonna do the, yep.
Are we gonna set the regular meeting for the 21st?
Well, you can do that at the organizational.
Yeah, okay, the organizational, all right.
And then, Ms. Dyer, you did, for what, which one of the six listed reasons for the?
Executive session.